Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Before I get started, I want to let every petitioner know that before we hear their petitions, there are four members tonight. We usually have five. So, the choice is up to you. We could still hear your petition, but in order it to be approved, it has to be by a supermajority. That means it has to be four to zero. Anything less than the petition fails. So, you have the choice. You could table your petition for the next meeting, which would be September 3rd. As of in August, we have no petitions heard. Or you could elect to go with the procedure. We will hear the petition and we will vote on it. Does everybody understand just was what was just explained? Does anybody have any questions? Is there anyone that would like to postpone until September 3rd? By show of hands? Great. That means you have full confidence. With that, today's date is July 2nd, 2019, and the public hearing of the Stratford Board of Zoning Appeals will come to order. We'll listen to all the petitions advertised for this session. Those of you that are not familiar with our process, we will hear the petitions. If the board should have any questions, they will ask. After the board is satisfied with their questions, we will close the public hearing and go into our administrative session, which we will... Those petitions, before we do that, you'll have an opportunity to speak your piece of why you feel your petition will be heard, and then we will go into our session, which is not open to the public. You can stay, but only members can discuss the petition. We just ask that, whatever the results are, that you restrain from any kind of emotion or any kind of outbursts. Please silence your phones. If you must answer, please do so outside of council chambers, as you don't disrupt the The board members are made up of Ms. Annette Streets, to my very far left, Ms. Julie Clary, Mr. Dave DeSulio, Ms. Gail DeSulio is our recording secretary, Ms. Suzmita Atara is our planning and zoning administrator, and the town planner, excuse me, and John Florick is our town attorney. With that, petition number one will be tabled until the September 3rd session. So, Ms. Streets, will you please give us the privilege of reading petition number two?
Mr. Chairman, could we take two, three, and four simultaneously? So, if you could ever read all three of those petitions, I'm going to make one presentation for all three of those items.
So move, but just understand that when we go through voting, each one will be separate, but that'll be fine.
Petition number two is Filo Street, Lot 1 and part of Lot 2. Petition of the state of William R. Miller, seeking a site plan review and waiver of the maximum allowable height from 30 feet to 37.5 feet to construct a two-family dwelling in an RM1 zone. Hardship: Property located in a FEMA flood zone and height of building must be raised to comply with FEMA flood elevation requirements. Coastal site plan review has been submitted with this application. Item number three, Filo Street, Lot 4 and part of Lot 5, Meadowview. Petition of the state of William R. Miller, seeking a site plan review and waiver of the maximum allowable height from 30 feet to 38.6 feet to construct a two-family dwelling in an RM1 zone. Hardship: Property located in a FEMA flood zone and height of building must be raised to comply with FEMA flood elevation requirements. Coastal site plan review has been submitted with this application. And item four, Filo Street, part of Lot 5, Meadowview. Petition of the state of William R. Miller, seeking a site plan review and waiver of the maximum allowable height from 30 feet to 38.7 feet to construct a two-family dwelling in an RM1 zone. Hardship: Property located in a FEMA flood zone and height of building must be raised to comply with FEMA flood elevation requirements. Coastal site plan review has been submitted with this application.
Thank you. Good evening, Attorney Knott. You may proceed.
Thank you. Good evening, ladies, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Barry Knott. I'm a lawyer with the firm of Knott, Knott &amp; Dunn with offices at 1656 Main Street, Stratford, and I'm here this evening on behalf of the estate of William R. Miller, care of attorney Lisa Knoff of 3333 Main Street, Stratford. At this time, I'd like to submit the certificates of mailing and make reference to a folder of exhibits which I have handed each of you, to which I will be making reference during the course of my presentation. Now, as was just indicated, these are applications for a variance of building height from 30 feet to 38.5 feet for three duplex homes to be located on Lot 1 and part of Lot 2 Filo Street, Lot 4 and part of Lot 5 Meadowview Avenue, and part of Lot 5 Meadowview Avenue. Three CAM applications were submitted in support of these applications because this property is located in CAM jurisdictional area. Exhibit one is a copy of the successor's map for this area, and you'll notice that I've highlighted, sort of in the middle of the page, a block in red, and two of the houses in that block have blue hatching across it. My client owns all of the property that is outlined in red. The two properties that have blue hatching are not owned by my client, and they are not part of this application. This property is on Ketchum Road, Meadowview Avenue, Filo Street, and Frash Street. Meadowview and Ketchum run off of Wood End Road towards Frash Pond Access Road, and this exhibit is simply to give you an idea of where we are talking about. Exhibit two is an existing conditions survey map. Now, this is the map of all the properties that subject to tonight's application. As you can see from the survey, and by comparing it to exhibit one, my client owns Lot 1, Lot 2, Lot 3, Lot 4, Lot 5, which is the big lot there, and then all the way over on the corner of Ketchum and Frash Street, Lot 8, which has got a garage, only a garage on it. You can also see that there is an existing one-family house and a garage located on Lot 2, on Filo Street, and there is a garage located on 3, Lot 3, and there is a garage located on Lot 8. My client owns the house and the three garages. The other property is vacant. Exhibit 3 is a photo of the vacant Lot 1 and part of Lot 2. As you will see later in my presentation, this vacant lot is the location of the first of the duplex houses my client will propose to build. Exhibit 4 is a photo of the existing house located on 2, Lot 2, and the adjacent garage, which is located on Lot 3. As you'll see later in my presentation, my client has no intention of doing anything with this house and garage, except to refurbish the buildings to modern standards. This house is old and needs to be updated, as does the garage. Exhibit 5 is a photo of the vacant Lot 4 and part of Lot 5 Meadowview, and this is the location of the second duplex house which we proposed to build. It's going to face Filo Street, and the side of it is going to run down Meadowview. Exhibit 6 is a photo of the vacant Lot 5 Meadowview, and this is the location of the third duplex house we proposed to build. Now, this house is located on the corner of Frash Street and Meadowview Avenue, and you see in the distance, there's a little gray tan garage on the right, and next to that are three trees along the street. The three trees along the street are on Lot 4 and 5, which is the photo I just showed you a minute ago, exhibit 5. Exhibit 6 is looking at the same property from the other side. So, one of the houses is going to face Frash Street, and the other is going to face Filo Street, and their backyards are going to be adjacent to each other. Exhibit 7 is a photo of Lot 8 Frash Street, which is currently vacant with the exception of a small garage and conceit to the right of the photograph. This lot will be annexed to the existing Lot 1 and part of Lot 2 to create an 11,942 square foot lot, which is the first of the duplex houses we proposed to build. Now, exhibit 8, this is a confusing exhibit, and I don't want you to spend too much mental energy on it, because it's not relevant to my application tonight, except to say that when we were trying to figure out the appropriate way to develop this raw land, Jay and I sat down and tried to figure out how we could create the maximum benefit from the development of this land. And as you can see, Lot 1, at the corner of Ketchum Road and Filo Street, would have 7,501 square feet, which is a conforming lot. Lot 2 with the existing house and garage on Filo Street would have 7,657 square feet. Lot 4, at the corner of Filo and Meadowview Avenue, would have 10,013 square feet, and Lot 5, at the corner of Meadowview and Frash, would have 10,039 square feet, 10,457 square feet, excuse me. Our plan was to build a single-family house on Lot 1, or seek a variance on Lot 1 to obtain a duplex. We were going to build duplex houses on lots 4 and 5, as we are planning to do now, and then Lot 8 was a 4,900 plus or minus square foot lot. We were going to come in for a variance on that house and try to build a one-family house. The problem with this scenario, as you can see from this exhibit, Jay and I, in order to make this work, created this artificially crooked property line between Lot 1 and the side of the house that's on lots 2 and 3. It comes back from the street perpendicular to Filo, and then it jogs off to the right, and it makes a couple of strange turns. And technically, this layout is legal, but it doesn't look well, and it would probably cause problems between the neighbors who ultimately own the houses on Lot 1 and Lot 2. So, I show you this simply to give you an example of the kinds of things that we were kicking around early on in the game. So, having looked at that, you can now put that exhibit out of your mind. Exhibit 9 is the important one. This is the lot line revision map, which we are proposing for approval tonight. As you can see from this exhibit, the revised Lot 1 runs from Filo Street all the way down to Frash Street along Ketchum Road. It's 11,942 square feet in size, where 10,000 square feet is required for a duplex type house. This Lot 1 is conforming in all respects to the zoning regulations for a duplex house in this district. The revised 2, excuse me, the revised Lot 2 is on Filo Street, and it is the location of the existing house and the garage, which I showed you in exhibit 4. This lot is 80.5 feet wide at the street and contains 8,045 square feet of land, where 7,500 square feet of land is required for a single-family house, and this lot conforms in all respects to the zoning regulations. Revised Lot 4 is on the corner of Filo Street and Meadowview Avenue. This is a 10,098 square foot lot, where 10,000 square feet is required for a duplex type house. This revised Lot 4 is also conforming in all respects to the zoning regulations. Revised Lot 5 is at the corner of Meadowview Avenue and Frash Street. This 10,539 square foot lot, where 10,000 square feet is required, also conforms in all respects to the zoning regulations for a duplex. So, what exhibit 9 represents is three lots which qualify for duplex-style housing in all respects, lot width, lot area, lot depth, except for building height, which is the variance we're asking for tonight, which I'll get into in a moment. Exhibit 10 is actually a closer version, and this is the site plan for Lot 1. As you can see, we show the house on this site plan at the corner of Filo and Ketchum, and we've incorporated Lot 8 into, along with Lot 1, to create a large 11,000-plus square foot lot where this duplex is going to be constructed. The house will face Filo Street, and it'll be next door to the old house that's in that photo that I showed you that's got the garage next door to it. Exhibit 11 is the site plan for the house on the corner of Filo Street and Ketchum Avenue. This is known as Lot 4. This is 10,000 square feet, as I indicated, and this house meets all of the zoning regulations vis-à-vis lot width, lot depth, lot area, et cetera, and this lot, this house will, back-to-back, the next exhibit I'm going to show you, which is exhibit 12, and this is the house that's going to be built on the corner of Meadowview Avenue and Frash Street. This is the duplex that's going to face Frash Street, and the back of this house will abut the back of the house that you just looked at in exhibit 11. Exhibit 13 are the architectural renderings of the duplex-style houses, which my client plans to construct on all three houses. This is approximately what the houses are going to look like, exhibit 13, and it's, I believe, it's a four-page exhibit. It's got floor plans, it's got exterior elevations, and this is what we're going to build. Exhibit 14 is a sectional drawing of the proposed house, showing the 37-foot building height required for these three houses. The way we measure building house height in Stratford is you take the average elevation around the foundation, 10 feet around the foundation, and you measure to the midpoint on the roof. So, if you've got a slanted roof, halfway up the roof is where the building height is measured to. So, you can see from this exhibit, where I've highlighted the 37 feet, that's taken from the ground up to the midpoint of the roof, and that is the variance that we're requesting. Now, as you can see from the existing conditions survey, the elevation of this property at present is approximately 4 to 5 feet. The FEMA flood elevation requirement in this zone is 12 feet. So, we are short by seven or eight feet from complying with the FEMA flood regulations. Therefore, these houses have to be elevated seven or eight feet in order to comply with the FEMA regulations. And therefore, because we have to raise the elevation of the houses, we need the variance of building height, because we can't build a 30-foot-high house on a lot that requires the base of the house to be elevated seven or eight feet higher than the land is now. So, I wanted to just discuss briefly Jay's administrative comments. In his memo dated June 17th, Jay says, "The proposed development is somewhat consistent with the character of the surrounding neighborhood and consistent with the permitted uses in the RM1 zone. The proposed home elevation is supported by town staff to preserve health, safety, and general welfare for the residents of Stratford. The board may choose to require the applicant to utilize varying building materials, clapboard, shakes, shingles, and one home combining both clapboard and shakes and shingles, and finishes to each of two families to reduce design monotony and improve property values. While Stratford's local height maximum requirement is an important piece of local development formula, the protection of life and safety by elevating homes vulnerable to storm-related event outweighs such a requirement. The board should consider approving all three applications for this reason, with the requirement to vary the building materials and exterior finishes. The applicant has taken measures to reduce life and safety concerns by elevating the proposed two-family houses to FEMA standards. This application has also been referred to DEEP, which had no comments on the application. It does not appear as though any coastal resources would be threatened as a result of this development proposal." So, on behalf of my client, as requested by Jay in his administrative comments, I hereby stipulate that all three homes will be constructed of different building materials and exterior finishes. One clapboard, one with shakes and shingles, and one representing a combination of clapboard and shakes and shingles, which Jay mentions to avoid the monotony of building exactly the same three houses at the same time. Finally, in order to be entitled to a variance, I have to show hardship. Obviously, the hardship here is the fact that this property is located in a FEMA flood elevation zone, and that the existing elevation of the property is substantially below that which is required by FEMA regulations. Accordingly, the height of the buildings must be raised in order to conform to the FEMA regulations. This is not something that's self-created by the applicant or financial in nature. Variances are necessary because God chose to put the existing elevation of this property substantially below FEMA requirements. Therefore, I would ask for your approval. As I mentioned earlier, these three proposed homes comply in all respects to our zoning regulations, with the exception of building height, which is what I'm asking for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Knott. Does the board have any questions? Ms. Streets?
Thank you. I appreciate that you will be following the recommendation to vary the building materials.
Yes.
But Jay's memo also suggests that the board inquire with you what alternatives were explored that could potentially eliminated the need for the variance.
Yes. We did look at the potential alternative. Now, these duplex houses are side-by-side, first floor, living room, kitchen, little dining area, second floor, three bedrooms and a bath, which is the typical duplex-style layout, side-by-side. We could have built the same kind of duplex as ranches, one-story houses instead of two-story houses, and then we wouldn't have needed the height variance, because we'd be building one-story houses instead of two-story houses. The problem with that is the expense associated with building such a house, because it's got substantially larger foundation cost and substantially larger roofing and truss costs, that it became impractical for us to develop these properties in that way. Additionally, that's not something that you see in the marketplace, duplex ranches side-by-side. People typically are looking for that which is described here.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions? With that, is there anyone here to speak in favor of this petition? Seeing none, is there anyone here in attendance that would like to speak in opposition to this petition? Come to the mic, please. State your name and address, please.
Ms. Desiree Sargent. I have two parcels. I'm at 42 Frash Street. It's my residence, and I also own 115 Meadowview Avenue on the corner. I came in and I spoke to Jay, and Jay said that we don't have duplexes anymore. He told me it was going to be two-family, which is what the letter says, and so am I wrong? Is it duplexes?
Attorney Knott? What Jay is talking about, two-family houses can be either one family living on the first floor and one family living on the second floor. That's the old-fashioned kind of two-family house. And then you have two-family houses which are duplexes, one person living on one side and one person living on the other side. What Jay's position is regarding duplexes is that we can no longer divide the lot down the middle and sell one half of the house to one person and the other half of the house to the other person. It's his opinion that that division is illegal. I don't agree with him. There was an opinion from the town attorney 35 or 40 years ago that said that duplex lots could be split like that. It's something that the zoning commission is going to have to address, but right now, Jay will not allow these houses to be divided into two separate parcels with one half being sold to two different people. So, they're duplexes, but they can't be sold individually. That's what he was...
So, the owner will own the whole house?
Will own the whole house. Exactly. Yep.
Just one second. Our planning administrator, our zone planning administrator would like to have a question.
My understanding was that the duplexes weren't allowed because they were creating two non-conforming lots when they were being sold to two different, you know, owners of the duplex and splitting the lot in between. Based on, you know, the walk-in request that we were getting from applicants, we noticed that when somebody wants to sell one half of the house to someone and one half to the other person, they were essentially taking one conforming lot and creating two non-conforming lots. And that's why, you know, Jay's opinion was that it's no longer allowed, because we're increasing the non-conformity in the neighborhood. But when it comes to homes where, you know, the lots are conforming, I think, you know, it should be okay.
Okay. My second concern is, at the two houses that I own, I get water in the basement, and it doesn't have to be a big storm. And I was telling Jay that, you know, all the years that we've had the farm there, it absorbs a lot of the water, a lot of the water. And Jay was explaining to me, he said that the houses are going to have an underground storm water galley with big pontoons, and I was wondering if I could get more information on that.
Attorney Knott, do you have an answer for that?
Well, what this young lady is talking about is, we have a regulation in this town that says that no storm water generated by the construction activity on a piece of property can leave the property. In other words, in the old days, we used to hook it up to the storm sewers and off it went, but you can't do that anymore. So, if there is any detention issues with respect to the building of these houses, then galleys, which is what Jay was talking about, would have to be built under the driveway or in the backyard somewhere to retain the water until it could gradually drain subterraneously off the property. I don't know that that's an issue here, but if it should become an issue here, that's how it would be handled. As far as sanitary sewer is concerned, there are sewers in this area, so sanitary sewers are going to be hooked up to the town sewer system.
Excuse me, Attorney Knott, are you saying that a problem would have to exist then to be addressed, or is this something that can be implemented to offset something like...
Well, it'll be addressed at the time of construction between the developer and the town engineer, because the town engineer is charged with enforcing that no runoff policy that I'm talking about. So, when he goes out to do his inspection, if it looks like there's water running into the street from this project, then he would insist at that point that galleys be installed. Now, during construction, there's also going to be soil and erosion control, hay bales and silt fences and that kind of stuff, to keep dirt from going into the street, which is true on all construction sites. So, I'm not aware of any subterranean water issues here, but if there should be some, they would be handled by galleys, as this young lady has indicated.
Thank you. Any further questions, Ms. Sargent?
Well, I'll just tell you my concerns. When I was understanding that, Jay said that this was going to be implemented, but now that it's not, there's already an issue there. The water gathers with Frash and Meadowview, and it can be like this high, and that's with the existing farm. But when Jay went over this with me, he made me feel better that, you know, he says underground storm water galleys would be installed with big pontoons, so that made it, he told me that it wouldn't guarantee that we would have less water, but we wouldn't get more because of these, because of these galleys. So, it seems like maybe that's not correct. I'm not sure. But thank you.
I just said what Jay called...
It's good, so it's going to be installed?
If there's a problem with water runoff, then the galleys will be installed, because the water runoff is not legal. You can't have that.
Okay.
You can't have that.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone here that would further like to speak in opposition to this petition? Come up to the mic, sir. State your name, your address, please.
Vincent Morrow, one-thirty-six Ryan Ave. I mean, I directed to him?
No, you speak into the mic, you direct the board.
So, that area, what I don't get is the height thing. If you're building on a slab and that family's already, it's already a duplex neighborhood. So, why can't he match the height restriction? I'm a realtor, by the way.
Sure, you can answer it and then...
There's a duplex right across Meadowview, as a matter of fact, from this property, yeah. When those duplexes were built, the FEMA flood elevation regulations were not in effect as they are now. So, you could build those houses at grade ten, twenty years ago. But since FEMA changed the flood zone map in Stratford about two years ago, the whole South End of Stratford is now in a flood zone, from South Avenue all the way to Lordship. And that wasn't the case when those other houses were built. So, they got away with it, but they weren't getting away with anything. There was no rule that said otherwise. But now there is.
So, he's building on a slab, basically, because those have basements.
Speaking to the mic, sir, please.
Yeah. I got the building plans here. The basement. Here's the basement plan. Here's the foundation plan. First and second floor, and then the side.
Ms. Tara?
Hi, I'm the town planner, and based on what Barry Knott said, I just want to add something to that. He's correct that FEMA, when FEMA had floodplain maps, originally, they were in the nineteen-seventies. And then for thirty years, they haven't revised the maps, and they realized that these storms are happening more frequently now. So, they updated the maps with handheld GPS devices. They actually went across the state to see which areas are susceptible to flooding. And based on that, the draft maps were shared with all towns in 2010. And then by 2013, they pretty much had everything done, and they have requested all the municipalities to adopt their own floodplain regulations based on these newly created maps. So, the newly created maps do indicate that most of South End is in a flood zone, which means that, you know, there's a high chance of flooding in those areas, even though it's a hundred-year floodplain, which previously it used to be thought that it'll be one in a hundred years that you might get this flood. But lately, what the scientists have been observing is that out of your thirty-year mortgage for a home, you'll have at least been hit at least four times or twenty-five percent chance to get a flood on that property. So, that's why the new floodplain regulations require one foot above base flood elevation for the area. In this case, whatever was the base flood elevation that the flood maps have identified, based on the flood study that was created by FEMA, they have to go one foot above the base flood elevation and then build a house on top of it. So, that way, they demanded municipalities not to have mechanical equipment or any livable space in this, you know, ten or twelve feet that is underneath the main living space so that if water comes in and floods the property, it flows out freely and it doesn't cause any additional damage to the property. And that's the reason why the new elevation requirements have been instituted by FEMA.
So, like with this, what if he was to build it on a slab with no basement, no garage, and put the mechanicals on the roof?
Yes.
That complies with FEMA guidelines?
Ms. DeCilio?
As a realtor myself, these are going to be built on a slab, as I can tell about it. You can't put a basement with FEMA.
Right. Well, there's stairs going up, right?
Right. Of the plan, it looks like the first floor is about nine or ten feet above the current grades. You're going to have basically a garage and some storage.
Right.
On the main level, from what I can tell by the plans. And then the living room, dining area, kitchen on the first level.
Which is...
And then two bedrooms are going to go to the plan on the second level. And, you know, the zoning regulation stipulates thirty feet of height. So, if you're not in FEMA flood elevation, you can build a grade and go up thirty feet. But if FEMA says you've got to go up ten feet, really, you're restricting the owner twenty feet.
Twenty feet. Okay.
So, he can squish it, his house, and the elevation doesn't change with the flood.
Right.
And it's different in different areas, by the way.
Right.
So, you know, FEMA may be, that area, according to Attorney Knott, was, I think you said, six or seven feet below.
Eight below the FEMA, sorry about that.
No, it was...
So, but some areas, it may only be six inches below. So, then the house, really, you're not being pushed up very far. You can probably use fill to pick up that six inches.
Correct, correct.
But they will be built on a slab, I guarantee. That's absolute from all my knowledge.
That was my only question, just the height, why they wanted to go higher.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak in opposition to this petition?
Hi, my name is Mike Senate. I live at sixty-eight Frash Street. I also own the property on one-fifty-four Meadowview Avenue. Both my properties are immediately across the street from these proposed buildings. The thing that concerns me is some of this land we're talking about is lower than the street level, which means that they're going to have to, of necessity, fill that land and raise it up a little bit before they build anything on it. That means it's going to be runoff water. I'm very concerned with runoff water. As it is right now, if you dig a hole in the ground in that area, you go down three feet, you hit water. That's how high the groundwater is. That was greatly exacerbated when they took the tie gate off on the road by the airport entrance there. There was a company down the street that was dumping toxic waste into the storm brain or emptied into that channel that feeds into Frash Pond. So, to fix that, the guy wanted, the environmental guy took the tie gate off and immediately raised the water level in the area. You can go over by Main Street and the Frash Pond there, and you'll see the original fence that's now underwater because the water level rose. So, I'm kind of concerned with runoff water, with impervious surfaces of driveways and roofs. And, like I say, of necessity, this is going to have to, they're going to have to fill that area and raise that. That water has no place to go other than my basement. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Attorney Knott, would you like to address?
As I just indicated a few minutes ago, we've got to comply with the drainage requirements of the town engineer. Two of the lots, four and five, are oversized. Actually, all three of them are oversized. Usually, you'll find a two-family house on a seventy-five-hundred-square-foot lot in Stratford. That's the minimum area requirement for a two-family house in Stratford. These lots are a minimum of ten thousand square feet. One is eleven thousand and change. So, there's going to be plenty of land area outside of the house area that will be available to absorb, to absorb, absorb water runoff. Thank you.
Question?
Is it absolutely necessary to have a two-family home and not a one-family home on these lots? And would the one-family home have fit into the height requirements? Because I know you said two-family, market-wise, financial feasibility-wise, that's a hardship. But what is the hardship that is associated with the land that, you know...
Well, first of all, a two-story, one-family house would have the same height issue as these houses do.
He could have not built it.
They're the same height. And as far as building one families, this is a two-family zone. It's, you know, two families are allowed in this area, and most of the area is multi-family zone. And that's what the market is down there. But the heights problem would be the same.
It's the same thing. Okay.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak in opposition to this petition? Seeing none, is there a motion to close petition two, three, and four? Motion made by Mr. DeCilio, is there a second? Second by Ms. Streets. All in favor? Aye. None opposed? Ms. Cleary, will you please read petition number five into the record? Can you adjust your mic, please? Thank you. Thank you. Good evening, ma'am. State your name and your address and your affiliation to this petition, please. And if you have any certificates of mailing, we'll take those too.
Say that again?
If you have any certificates of mailing, if you haven't already submitted it, you can submit it now.
Okay. I believe we have everything.
Could you please speak into the mic? You can adjust it if you want.
Hi, my name is Islam Mary Nalabre. I am the owner of Thirty-One Arrowhead Place in Stratford. Like she said before, we were looking to build a deck for our growing family, for my three children. So, I'm here. I'm just seeking to see if you will be approved. That's what we're looking for, so. I don't know, like, what I'm supposed to do after that, why, what is exactly I'm supposed to do? Because this is my first time here. I don't know exactly what's going on. So, you guys got to tell me what to do, and I will answer any questions.
Does the board have any questions? Ms. Tara?
Yes. Did you mail your neighbors a notice saying that this application will be heard at the public hearing today? We need the certificates of mailing.
Ms. Streets? I'm sorry.
We actually...
Do you have it in your package? I don't have it.
Any variances?
Do you have it?
No. Yes, ma'am, we need the certificates of mailing. Did you get a packet from the planning and zoning administrator?
We have some papers here. I don't know if this is what you're looking for, these papers here?
No.
And then we have a big, I think this is the... It's none of that?
No.
Oh, yes. Oh, is that what you're looking for, the papers that, yes, we did send them papers. Let me see. This is one of them. I apologize because I don't know the whole thing. Never been to this. Okay. This one is for a neighbor. I think she's the only one that sent us back.
Can you bring that up?
Sure.
Pass that off to Ms. Streets? That doesn't look like it. We can't. No, we can't. Right.
Do you have the receipt for the certificate of mailing? Like, this is the letter that was supposed to be posted, but do you have the... I can show you how it looks like.
Okay, please.
Yeah, I just, the one that Barry just gave. I'll just show her.
Okay, so we mailed them this, and then we have to mail them back to us, right?
This is by certified mail. When you do something by certified mail, you get a receipt for yourself that has to be attached with the letter and submitted.
Oh, so that's the one. We didn't have that one. Can you please help and see exactly if something here, because this is that, all of the paper my husband gave me? Because he has to be at work. He can't come here today. I think we didn't even know that.
You have the right letter that you gave, but it has to be by certified mail. So, we know that it actually went to the property, and we have the receipt.
Yes, we did send it to the person, from the possibilities to their address.
Yeah, we have the receipts. Let me talk to the attorney first.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, ma'am. Ma'am, since we don't have the certificates of mailing, this petition's going to be tabled till the September third meeting. So, we need that to be able to vote on and to carry through, so...
Okay. Can I, could you please...
Can you please speak into the mic?
Okay. I just want to... Okay, I just want to call my husband to verify with him, can I do that, please?
We can take this one off and put this one last, at least until the next two petitions are read. If we don't have an answer by then, then we'll table petition number five, so. Is that amenable to the board? Thank you, ma'am, so you go ahead and try to contact your husband and just let him know he's on the timeline.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
If not, then it'll be tabled until the September third session.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. De Suleo, you please read petition number six.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, petition number six, Ninety-One Circle Drive, petition of Kathleen Hart Jones, seeking a site plan review and waiver of sections three point one four, requiring a minimum distance of fifty feet from an inland wetland to construct a rear deck incidental to a single-family dwelling in an RS three zone. Hardship is property is non-conforming lot that doesn't meet the ninety-foot lot depth requirement.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, ma'am, state your name, your address, and your affiliation with this petition, and also if you have certificates of mailing, if you hadn't already.
I do, you should have them in the packet, but I also have them. Uh, my name is Kathy Hart Jones, I live at Ninety-One Circle Drive, and I am here to, to petition for a deck on my property. Let me find that. Is this what you're looking for?
Yeah.
It should be in your packet, if you want them to. Okay, good. So, you'll see on the map, the plot map, the deck that I'm proposing is not exceeding, it's not going any closer to the pond or the water than the existing part of the house. It's just gonna be a fifteen by fifteen deck that'll just, you know, finish off and square off the house of the property. The house was built in nineteen thirty-one on ledge, I literally have huge boulders in my basement the house was built on top of. There's also a lot of ledge and rocks on the yard. The yard also slopes pretty, it slopes downward, there's no actual spot to just even just put a chair, a couple chairs in a flat area. So, that's why I'm proposing, I'm hoping to be able to build a deck right there.
Is that it, ma'am?
I'm thinking, yeah, I think I got everything, yeah.
Does the board have any questions?
Um, I just, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a note of record, the map submitted shows nine, has the address Ninety-One Circle Road on One-Eleven Circle Drive. So, if you're looking at the map, anyone, that's not the house, the house to the left that says existing dwelling, proposed fifteen by fifteen deck, is the petitioner's, what the petitioner is discussing right here. Ironically, the, the one that's labeled Ninety-One Circle Drive is the next one, which is One-Eleven Circle Drive, so they must have hired the same surveyor and...
Yeah, we had...
So, they put it wrong, I just wanted, for the record...
Well, thank you.
Correct the map.
Looked all great to me.
And so, the commission members can understand, we're looking at what's called existing dwelling, and it shows a proposed fifteen by fifteen deck.
So, move?
But I have no questions regarding the application.
Does the board have any more questions? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in attendance that would like to speak in favor of this petition? Seeing none, is there anyone here that would like to speak in opposition to this petition? Seeing none, is there a motion to close petition number six? Motion made by Ms. Streets, is there a second? Second by Mr. De Suleo, all in favor? Aye, none opposed? Petition number six is closed. Ms. Cleary, will you please read our last petition for the night, petition number seven?
One-Eleven Circle Drive, petition of Catherine Hollywood, seeking a site plan review and water waiver of subsection three point one four, requiring a minimum distance of fifty feet from an inland wetland to construct a swim spa and replace an existing shed in the front setback incidental to a family dwelling, a single-family dwelling in an RS three zone. Hardship. Property is a non-conforming lot that doesn't meet the ninety-foot lot depth requirement.
Good evening, folks, please state your name, your addresses, and your affiliation to this petition, please. And you did send in your certificate of mailing, I believe?
You should have them in the packet.
Yes. Please proceed.
Okay, I'm Catherine Hollywood, and my husband will and I downsized to One Hundred-Eleven Circle Drive just a few months ago. We are, it's the answer to our prayers, and we had to let go of many prized possessions, but one of them I brought with me was my swim spa, so it's actually already there on the property. I have pictures of the property, I apologize, they're not very large, but it's just a non-conforming lot in a neighborhood of non-conforming lots, of small houses that are very close to the water, not very deep lots. What I'd like to do is to move the swim spa from where it is to a very similar platform that's made of wood and rock, wood and stone, to the opposite side of our, our deck that we have that is existing now. It's a twelve-foot by fourteen deck that's already there, and we'd like to add four feet to the side of it in order to have an access into the swim spa. It's a therapeutic spa that I use, I'm slightly disabled, and it's a way I can get exercise at home. I've really missed it these last few months, not being able to use it. And also, we have a very small, broken, ugly deck, um, excuse me, shed that you'll see in the pictures. And we need to replace that deck, I mean, the shed, excuse me, I keep saying that. Need to replace that shed with a slightly larger one on the same spot, and it's really, there's no place other than that on the property that we can see to put it. And it's been on the, you know, there's been a shed there for apparently for the last twenty-five years, twenty-four years since the house was built. Do you have any questions?
Does the board have any questions? Thank you. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in favor of this petition? Seeing none, is there anyone here that would like to speak in opposition to this petition? Seeing none, is there a motion to close petition number seven? Motion made by Mr. De Suleo, second? Second by Ms. Cleary, all in favor? Say aye? Aye?
Thank you.
None opposed? Is there a motion to close the public, oh, hold on one second? Yes, ma'am, did...
I, I spoke to her husband, and I explained to him what the problem was. And he told me that he had spoken to Tiny, who gave him the information regarding the certificates of mailing, and that approximately one week after he submitted the application, which was a month ago, he sent the letters to four neighbors, got the certificates of mailing, and turned them into Tiny. That's what her husband just told me on the phone. Now, obviously, she doesn't have them in her file, they would be somewhere in the zoning office, and Tiny may know where, where they are. But according to her husband, the certificates of mailing were sent.
I will check with Tiny, unfortunately, because I don't see it in the file, and none of the board members here have the receipt copies too, we can't proceed with the decision without them being there here. So, I will, first thing in the morning, I'll check with Tiny, but we can't make a decision tonight, I think. I, I would defer it to the chairman and the attorney, but that's, that's what I, I think it is.
I believe because he didn't know that he, he has to have it here with us. That's what I believe, because Tiny told him that he's gonna have to bring it here. So, that's why after he mailed it, he has everything, and he bring it to, to Tiny. And we didn't know that we have to have it with us now, at this present moment.
I will check again and see. I do see the copies of the letters, but...
Chairman?
Yes?
Question from the town attorney. Can you approve this tonight, subject to Sismetha verifying with Tiny that the certificates of mailing are in the file?
Mr. Florrie? One sec. One second, I believe...
I do find it now. You all did not get the copies, I think, but it's just stuffed in here, so you're lucky.
You got them, thank you.
Excellent, excellent. So, with that, do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
You have to close this petition.
Oh, um, thank you. So, do we have a motion to... I didn't get the, no, I'm sorry. Is there anyone in attendance that would like to speak in favor of petition number five, Thirty-One Arrowhead Place? Is there anyone here in a session that would like to speak in opposite, in favor of petition number five? Hearing none and seeing none, now do we have a motion to close petition number five? Motion to close by Mr. De Suleo, second? Second by Ms. Streets, all in favor? None opposed? Do we have a motion to close the public hearing? Motion to close the public hearing by Mr. De Suleo, all in favor, is there a second? Second by Ms. Cleary, all in favor? Aye. With that, is there a motion to take property two, three, and four, Philo Street, off the table? Is there a second? Second by Ms. Streets, all in favor? Discussion? Mr. Suleo? Uh, Mr. Suleo?
I'm sorry, about, yeah, five or so years ago, when FEMA updated their flood elevation maps, and, you know, the house needs to be pushed up, so I think a hardship exists. You know, I, I reviewed the plans, the developer's looking for nine-foot ceilings on the first and second floor, it kind of caught that, that's a little bit of a grab, but I, I don't necessarily think that's gonna make a difference, whether it's, you know, a thirty-seven-foot waiver or thirty-four-and-a-half-foot waiver. I mean, it's gonna be the same, and I, I don't agree with Mr. Hibanski in modifying the, the types of materials. I think down there with the wind and everything, you know, I don't know what the developer's planning, but I think if he was gonna go with vinyl, you know, combination of vinyl clavert or vinyl shake, as long as it's weather-resistant versus different types of materials such as wood, vinyl, hardy plank, you know, and anything like that. So, I think the continuity is, is a good thing, but, but I think it's a good application. I walked the land, I didn't walk the land, I drove the, the land, because it's all visible, and I think it's gonna be a good project.
Any other discussion? Oh, Mr. Suleo, so are you saying that it's...
So, with that, with that, oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, I was gonna say, so are you leaving up to the builder to determine the material, or are you saying with condition, or...
I believe so, yeah, I believe so. He's gonna do what's in the best interest of, of marketing them, so, and I'm sure they're gonna be attractive. Just my two cents. With that, um...
Oh, so are you making a motion to approve?
Yeah, let me make a motion to approve items two, three, and four, Philo Street, Lot, Lot One and part of Lot Two, Lot Four and part of Lot Five, and, and Lot, and part of Lot Five, Meadow View, as applied for, which would be thirty-seven-and-a-half feet on Lot, the first item number two, thirty-eight-point-six feet on three, and thirty-eight-point-seven feet on Lot Four, with no conditions.
Make a motion for a roll call vote?
Oh, yeah, a second.
Oh, uh, is there a second to Mr. Suleo's approval? Second by Ms. Cleary, all in favor? Okay. Roll call vote? Ms. Streets, do you vote in favor, how, how say you?
Yes.
Ms. Cleary? Mr. Suleo?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Congratulations. Passes unanimously, unanimously. Is there a motion to take petition number five, Thirty-One Arrowhead Place, off the table? Motion made by Ms. Streets, second? Second by Mr. Suleo, all in favor? Aye? Discussion? With this petition, the hardship is more or less like a, it doesn't fit the narrative of land use. It's pretty much like a layman's term, but, um... I'm not quite sure, does anybody else have any decisions or feelings on?
Well, if, if you look at the survey map, the rear of the one-family dwelling is thirty-one-point-seven feet from the property line. And I'll yield to Sismetha, but I believe the setback is thirty feet, which would allow them a one-foot, seven-inch deck. Which, I think the proximity of the house on the lot to the rear line, which I have no idea when it was constructed, but when I did the site review and drive by it, it looks like it has some age to it. Prohib, in fact, you can see it right on the map, the thirty-foot setback line prohibits a practical, any practical deck. In fact, it doesn't even allow for probably two steps to go down to the grass. So, therein lies the hardship, even though the applicant didn't state the hardship, it's clear on the map in, in my mind that it exists.
Mr. Tarter?
But unfortunately, the trees were covered, and I couldn't see either from the area, and I didn't want to get into the house and look into this. I agree with you, based on the map, it does locate it, I don't know what's behind that, though, to be honest, like, maybe somebody else's yard, or gap there, I don't know. But, you know, there's another thing to this, based on Jay Hibanski's report, if you have noticed, about the coverage.
Oh, I didn't.
Building coverage will be exceeding from twenty percent, seventy-two percent for this. So, essentially, that, that's a decision that the board has to make, whether you would allow the coverage to be increased. Jay and I had quite a bit of discussion on this this afternoon, and Jay seems to agree that if, you know, the applicant is able to, you know, offset some of the impacts that are caused by additional coverage by providing permeable pravers or driveways, for driveways, that may be something that you can consider as approved with conditions, but, you know, I'll leave it to the board to decide.
I'm willing to approve the application with the condition of, again, creating more permeable surface, since it's a driveway, a walkway, total of two and twenty-five square foot permeable surface.
Before we do that, can I ask the attorney if that is legal? Because is it legal to require a condition for something that's not being proposed to be modified or built? Like, the driveways are not a subject of this application, only the deck is the subject of this application.
You can require, uh, by condition, anything that is related to, to what is being requested. So, it doesn't necessarily have to be specifically stated, as long as it's directly... So, it doesn't necessarily have to be specifically stated, as long as it's directly related in some way to what's being requested.
So, if you're saying you can build a deck, but you have to replace your driveway with pavers, is that okay?
Okay, if there's a reasonable nexus between requiring that and building it.
Yeah, in this case, we are saying that because their coverage is increasing, and if the coverage increases, um, you know, the runoff increases, so we wanna make sure, you know, somehow, the runoff from the property decreases, aid to some kind of permeable surface, if they're increasing the coverage.
You certainly can attach that as a condition, and I didn't hear any discussion in the presentation of what run.
Mr. Suleo?
If someone was adding an addition to a house, they're creating roofline, gutters, impervious, but a deck, at least my deck, has slats in it, and the water just goes right through, so you're really, even though it's increasing coverage because of the zoning regulations, um, I don't see it as adding runoff that doesn't already exist. Now, if they're building a, you know, some sort of impervious deck, I can't imagine them doing it according to the plans I looked at, um, then, like on some of the, you know, higher-end houses in Westport that have fancy schmancy and copper and everything else, and that's, uh, different, but I, I don't, I don't know if they're doing that here. So, I think, although if it did increase impervious surface, this board has acted on commercial applications and residential applications, according to Jay's comments, to create more permeable surfaces, or whatever word I'm looking for, um, but in this case, I don't see it. But anyway, that's my two cents.
So, is there a mo- making a motion to approve as-is? Mr. Suleo?
I will, I will make a motion to approve 31 Arrowhead Place's petition, um, to build a deck incidental to a single-family dwelling. I will modify the applicant's hardship, although I do understand allergies are serious, but the true hardship is, the rear of the property is so close to the rear lot line, it's positioned on a lot that prohibits their peaceful enjoyment of the property, therefore, they're building the deck.
Do we have a second? Second by Ms. Streets? Will now have a roll call vote for approval? Ms. Streets, I'll say you?
Yes.
Ms. Cleary? Mr. Suleo? And the chair votes yes. Passes unanimously. Congratulations. You're welcome. Is there a motion to take 91 Circle Drive off the table?
So moved.
So moved by Ms. Streets, second? Second by Mr. Suleo, all in favor? Aye? Discussion? No discussion? We have a, make a motion for approval of 91 Circle Drive? Mr. Suleo?
Make a motion to approve, uh, 91 Circle Drive as submitted.
Is there a second?
I second.
Second by Ms. Cleary?
I'm sorry, the har-...
Okay, we have to read in the hardship.
The hardship is stipulated in the application, hardship is the property's non-conforming lot, doesn't meet the depth requirement.
Thank you.
Not to mention, the pond is, is right behind us.
Yeah, it's right there. So, we have a motion to approve? I mean, we're gonna go roll call to approve. Ms. Streets?
Yes.
Ms. Cleary? Mr. Suleo?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Motion passes unanimously. Is there a motion to take petition number seven off the table? So moved by Ms. Streets? Second by Ms. Cleary, all in favor?
Aye.
Is there a discussion? Make a motion to approve 111 Circle Drive with the hardship being property's non-conforming lot that doesn't meet the 90-foot lot depth requirement? Second by Ms. Cleary? Oh, I make the motion. Roll call vote for approval? Ms. Streets, I'll say you?
Yes.
Ms. Cleary? Mr. Suleo? And the chair votes yes. Motion passes unanimously. We'll now go into administrative session. Is there an approval of the minutes from June 4th?
So moved.
So moved by Ms. Streets, second? Second by Ms. Cleary, all in favor? Aye? Says here, there's a camera view, but we already... Wait a minute. I think you should do that. Oh, here it is, it's right here in front of me, I'm sorry. So, is there need to be a discussion with the cam view, 'cause we just, uh, we just voted to approve? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Streets, all in favor? Aye? As far as the variances in the ADA compliance, I think that should be discussed at the September 3rd meeting only because, um, Ms. Young's name is mentioned, um, that attorney, Alex Florick, had answered, uh, concerning the ADA, uh, compliance with variances. So, is, we have a motion that that's okay to table that until the September 3rd? Is there a motion? So moved by Ms. Streets, second? Second by Ms. Cleary, all in favor? Aye? Has there any other concerns or, uh, complaints or kudos, or anything anybody wants to say?
Now, Mr. Chairman, I just wanna say, uh, I think you did a admirable job of giving the applicant time to call her husband, and speaking time to actually find those mailings, uh, thereby allowing them to complete their objective, that looks like it was under construction.
Already, yeah, yeah. It definitely was a last second hurrah, so, thank you for that.
I apologize, you didn't get copies, you know, it was just so hidden that nobody could have noticed.
It happens, but it turned out really well. With that, is there, uh, any other concerns? You have a motion to close? Motion to close by Mr. De Suleo, second? Second by Ms. Cleary, all in favor? Well done, everyone, motion, uh, the session is clo- is adjourned.